Hello. Hello again. Everybody, it's nice to see you all. This is the call to order for our February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Open Public Meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees, being held via hybrid format, allowing for remote attendance. I'll take a roll call to confirm that trustees, library staff, and any other persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. For the trustees, first I'll mention that we know Rob Pettit unfortunately is unable to be with us tonight, but he's in touch and he'll be watching the recording soon. Please say aye if you're here. Kay Cahill.
Aye.
Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Erhard Graef.
Aye.
Michael O'Neill.
Aye.
Megan Small.
Aye.
And me, Jay Fialka. I'll say aye also. I didn't mean to limit your responses.
Yeah, I know.
By requiring only an aye. An aye for an aye. Library staff, Acting Director Dimitri Kiriakas.
Here.
Technology Specialist Danielle Power not here with us tonight. Administrative Specialist Jenna White. Program Specialist Gayle Dennett. And Recording Secretary Faith Christie.
Yeah, here.
Count of Nathan, a town of Needham, we're happy to have Deputy Town Manager Katie King, who's on the on the agenda with us tonight. No one here from the Library Foundation, I don't think. This meeting is being recorded. If there's a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at seven o'clock P M. on March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Trust, Library Trustees, to order at seven oh four P M. First, I'll ask, is there anybody here in person or remotely from the public who has any comments they'd like to share with us? No? Okay. Well, you didn't have any comments. We're happy you're here with us, Amelia. As next again, just as a visitor, it's nice to have a crowd. I'd like to request a motion to approve the minutes of the of the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second. And then we can discuss, please. Are there any comments on those minutes before we take a vote to approve? No comments?
I do have one thing, I'm sorry. There's a little unfair of a five minute.
Welcome back, babe.
Oh, thank you. Happy to be back, although I had a great excursion. I just was wondering on page two, and since I didn't attend this meeting, maybe I just don't, I'm not following what what was said here. So on page two, second paragraph. Halfway down, in answer to trustee questions, Dimitri noted that some data priorities will await the new director, but the general data information from staff should be complete within two months. Okay, that sentence fine. The next one, Airheart. Airheart noted that the presentation piece will flow from trustees. I'm not sure what the presentation piece is meant by that, and also, and trustees in charge of each goal, and that the overview can be provided. I just wasn't, those two terms, presentation piece and overviews, kind of like, what are we referring to? I didn't know what they meant, but that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I fully understand what that sentence is trying to communicate, but I know that what should be communicated there is is about, the overviews are meant to be the presentations that we are giving in teams of two.
Okay.
Across several meetings.
The board.
April, May, and June.
Would it be easiest to just, I would think, delete those two sentences from the minutes? Are they are they necessary? Or else, you know? Well. Or unless you want to come up with a some some suggested alternative language that's that you're more comfortable with.
Maybe just to describe the, as Airheart was saying, that these particular, these particular pieces are with reference to trustees given specific.
The pieces is the reviews.
Right, that we will be doing as trustees and teams.
Yep.
Maybe we should stick with like one term.
Yeah.
If we're talking about the same review document that will be presented.
Yeah, we'd have to go back.
But I would say that that the reviews, the reviews will flow.
Okay.
From trustees in charge of each goal. Is that people comfortable with that?
Airheart, it's coming out of your mouth.
I mean, we'd have to go back to the tape to determine what exactly is that.
I'm trying to interpret what you're saying was the intent. You know, I thought, but.
That is what I think the intent is. I, I, yes, I don't think it's it's. I don't think we have to be that elaborate in whatever the sentence is and just say that, you know, we're going to provide overviews over the course of several meetings.
Overviews. Overview is the right, like, the review.
Well, well, we're, well, we were thinking about, I think, I think overview is meant to suggest that there is a presentation of the reports, right? Because we have a report for each goal essentially, right? That we're combining into a final collection. And so each of those reports may not be covered in, you know, word by word. And so there might be some some summary of that that is presented to the rest of the trustees.
It's an overview of the review.
How about saying the trustees will provide overview reports over three months? Or over April through June?
Sure.
That would be good because then it's specific. And then if somebody from the general public was looking at it, then they would know, just like you were saying.
Sentences and put that other one.
Yeah, sure. Is there two sentences? I think there's one.
Just the one that starts with Airheart.
Yeah, and then would do.
Thank you.
For me.
Any other?
I had submitted page three, section thirteen, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Oh, yes, I think that we're already, yeah, already.
Oh, yeah, okay, just making sure that it's done.
What was that one? Review note, it was addressing Amari Power.
Yeah, it's doctor.
I think that change was made in your revised.
Okay, got it.
Just make sure.
And Paige, you have, you have a copy of this?
Yeah, I do. Yep, no problem.
Any other comments, or if we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I know, we don't need a motion.
Oh, we are, just the first motion of the fight, okay. I'll.
Do we have a second? Michael's second. Okay.
Okay. I'll go around Rob again. Rob Pettit is not with us. Sorry, Anna?
We can just say aye together.
Together?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'll go around. You can respond how you like, indicate your approval. Kay Cahill.
Aye.
Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Erhard Graef.
Aye.
Michael O'Neill.
Aye.
Megan Small.
Aye.
And me, Jay Fialka also says aye. I guess now on the agenda, the director. Acting Director of the Court, thank you. Okay, I've got some general highlights. Aaron Bassett, our team librarian, picked out the volume team group for this meeting, had five attendees, and nine applicants come in throughout the month. It's a library, this is about library volunteer group for ages twelve, eighteen year olds who like to help out the young adult department and other half things at the library. It'd be a great way to get teen input, how this is also going to be a great way to get teen input, how they'd like to use library space and what kind of programming will be given to them. Shaloon's program attendance, Ben Heim, particularly Veronica's January nineteenth showing of the movie Pro Van Together. No idea what that's about, but that sounds neat. Stacy Pease's music program, the Back to Rock Instrument Petting Zoo, Charles Berry Ballet Dance Program, always been funded by the Friends, and Paul Duncan, head of children, who's working with Elliot Elementary in town, provider pop-up library at their family literacy night. And she she asked me about that, because Allison's important outreach, but this is going to be published in the school ask for Paul specifically, so we're going to make that happen.
And thanks to the Friends for their funding.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
For fun, yes, and. So the reference app is fully adapted to a program we have, LibStafford. Thanks to Allison, helps implement, we've got experiences scheduled, so they're open with Stafford. The process of adding circulation schedules will be followed by children's. And this is going to allow department heads to be able to look at, like, we can see patterns emerging or gaps in the schedule. It's easier for staff to put in, pass the time off. It allows us to do the schedule further ahead of time rather than the way we're doing it before by Google Sheets or Excel spreadsheets. So we're very excited about that. It's a little bit of a learning curve, but everybody's working on it. Staff can access the schedule, make requests for us on the library, and it also helps us ensure that all our public service desks have published, while allowing staff to swap or request time on, on any notice. And, okay, annual, every year we read our magazines and Jeff, Jeff Arnold and Jackie Bailey did a great job with, they finished everything that was on there. When they're taken out of the magazine room, where do they go? I think they get, well, they get put in back files, because they're
Two, three years.
Two, three years. Then anything older than that, I think that's recycled. But I don't think we have anything older than that, whatever we prefer back files. Pretty lucky to be there that. Danielle Power, according to, suggests a purchase form that's on library's website, and it's designed so it goes to each selector for the particular kind of area or genre that somebody's asking for. So it's nice to have it electronic. We're happy, of course, with the public. If somebody walks in or calls us, they're going to make a suggestion, I can't really use the website. We'll do it for them at any one of the public service desks. So it's great, Danielle do that.
Yeah, that's great.
Now, this next part. Have they been getting a number of responses on that? Oh, sure, yeah, pretty good, yeah. But like I said, even for patrons who really, they they missed the little forms that we have, we'll do it for that. And Amelia emails a lot of, a lot of Amelia food book. I never met Amelia before tonight. We communicated by email quite a bit, a lot of nonfiction suggestions inside, great suggestions. Tamar Dogg coordinated consolidated invoices. So this, this is going to save us some time, there'll be some staff time and money. With Baker and Taylor, who is who's our provider for our print books for the most part. It's going to save us eight to ten hours of staff time each week. The majority of visible voting materials in the Needham Free Public Library's collection come from Baker and Taylor. And the ordering and invoicing process leads to shipments each weekday, with an average of fifty items a day. Before this led to a lot of free invoices a week, Baker and Taylor took a lot of Jenna's time, it took a lot of my time. They offered a consolidated invoice option, which has reduced this to two and three invoices each week. And it's going to reduce manual entry, a manual error, instead of, and for Jenna, myself, and and accounting, and we think that's a great rule innovation. It's a, is a fabulous, thank you.
Yeah, that's great to see the behind the scenes working, kind of, you know, becoming more streamlined, so thank you.
Dimitri, you want questions at the end, or because I, I just caught up on something that.
What's that?
The, the form, the suggested purchase form, I'm sorry, I'm.
Oh, that is a suggest.
Yeah, I have a question about it.
Sure, it's just suggesting a purchase or something.
I have it here, and I'm just curious about if requires the person's library card number. And I'm just wondering why is a requirement?
Typically because they don't have to put it in there, but I mean, we can't put a request on book on the material for them unless we have their library card.
Right.
They don't want to, I don't think they have to do it if they don't.
I'm thinking more of folks who don't have a library card, and they want to ask for one, so they will not be able to, because it says required.
It's maybe I'll have to look at it, if we need to add a sentence to say, if you'd like us to hold material for you or request it.
I'm just wondering if I need to have it, because we want to request it for.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if we do that request.
Is there a place on the website that talks about how to get a library card? Because this is really just an opportunity to give somebody information about how to get a library card.
Or if if there is a reason behind, I'm just curious from the inclusion perspective, if you know, people who may want to ask, and then, oh, I don't have a card, I can ask.
Well, I mean, I'll take a look at it and see if we need that language for that. Yeah, I mean, we're always happy to take suggestions from anybody, you know, but if somebody would like us to hold it for them or request it for them, we wouldn't need a library card. So, but I'll take a look at that.
Thank you for.
I'll take a look at that. Okay. Which is starting new children's program called Populifying Motor Skills, program runs once a month, children ages two to three years old. Activities focused on developing the muscles in the hands, which will develop a pencil grip and other skills that will be needed for activities like cutting wood or holding a pencil. And you heard us say the name before, Elliot Frante, who was in our circulation department, he's been a great addition to the team of children, put together his first book display, he has on the couch, other authors and illustrators. And they're very happy to have him, we're happy to have him here too. Personnel. So Andy Kyra started on February seventh in the tech service department, a new part-time tech services assistant. Welcome, Andy. I tell everybody I stopped asking after the first week he came back. Let's see, the full-time tech services assistant job opening recently, they had everyone, Manny retired. Will be both posted until February eighteen, we've had about twenty-one applicants so far.
Great.
And a few internal applicants, so.
And does that require any special degree or anything?
No, that one is a paraprofessional condition.
Okay.
Doesn't, nothing, nothing in addition. There are two vacancies in circulation that were left by Autumn Brown, through Brode reference, and Elliot Frante, being promoted to children's. We're looking possibly hiring three part-time staff members to cover scheduling needs. It's, as people have come and gone, oh, the schedules have been a mismatch, and as we try to post the positions, there, we just hired a position recently where the person's working every weekend. That's going to burn somebody out pretty quickly. So we're hoping, we think we can afford it, both in hours and money. We added a third one so we can make it more like, you have a shift during the week, but it's like every other weekend. Make it a little more attractive to attract people to the position and maybe retain them. And that's that's our thinking with that. So we've been talking to H R about being able to do that, so. As soon as we, hopefully in the next few days, we'll be able to post those free positions. And that's it. Okay. Gifts. I can go through this, and then you can all vote on that. From the Friends of the Needham Free Public Library, hundred dollars in honor of Alfred Russ Dusick. From Heather Andy Marsh, five hundred dollars, the Needham Community Council, a hundred, the Living League Internet Book Club books. Mr. Kaplan, a hundred dollars. From Tova Peter, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, probably not. Fifty-five dollars for art books, and for Lynn Bane, two thousand dollars for art.
I think it's two hundred kids.
Oh, you think it's a hundred?
I think I have it down there, and that's my fault.
Okay, all right. There was twenty thousand? We're happy and appreciate however many.
So I have a quick question on that. Oh, just, so these, I've been looking at trust funds lately, and they go, these go into the permanent donation fund, is that where these donations go into, or what, how does that, these donations get handled?
They do.
Yeah, first of all, it was twenty dollars.
Twenty.
Oh, twenty, two thousand. Limited a little desperately, yeah. Okay. So these gifts, and any other gifts that aren't delineated by the donor for a specific trust fund, do go into the permanent donation fund. At this point, we'll consider this money encumbered, and we will not be asking you annually to go back and say, okay, so are you still okay with us buying twenty dollars of art books from Lynn Bane? So because we're presenting the gifts to you now with any intentions that were on there, so it's considered encumbered going forward. Sometimes we do get larger donations that aren't designated for a specific purpose. Yeah, like this is the one from the generous one from the the Marsh. Yeah, so those, while we do consider them to be encumbered, what usually happens is that becomes the lump sum that we're asking for at the end of the year. If there's something that comes up during the year that we do need to find money for, and the operating budget doesn't accommodate it, and it's in line with what we generally purchase. Like if we've had a lot of requests for young adult books, but Erin's placed all of her orders, that we might use that money without going back and forth with the specific thing, but if it wasn't for one. It's in the permanent donation fund. Yes, that's where it lives. Yeah, that's where it lives. And then we just, at the end of the year, which should have happened in November to December, but we're down the treasure, so around that time is usually when we would get the final numbers about all of the trust funds. And any money that has been in the permanent donation fund will be interest earning, so we'll ask you folks to okay our planned spending, which will include anything that we didn't spend throughout the year. Okay, good, thanks for the explanation, honey. Glad someone's on top of it.
We have a motion to approve the gift.
So moved.
In seconds.
Second.
Okay, thank you. And I'll go around by names, give me one second. Yeah, Michael O'Neill.
Aye.
Erhard Graef.
Aye.
Kay Cahill.
Aye.
Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Megan Small.
Aye.
No, Rob Pettit is not with us tonight. Jay Fialka, also aye, and that's that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the gifts, that's right.
Yes, thanks for the generous.
Yes, and Dimitri, will you continue, please? Sure, sure. Building around. Building around, so items completed, with the help of a couple of craft workers, Martin with the scenery and Kevin Fleming. Angel removed a small old desk in tech services apartment vending room and replaced with a new desk in progress now. The new desk had been sitting for twenty years in the closet, right? That's the new desk. You don't want to see the old. It was components of it, it never got set up when the building opened. And I'd always wondered, and you know.
I wanted the floor space back.
You wanted the floor space back, and I'm like, oh, what's this? As we're talking about the tech service area and redoing it a little bit and figuring out, well, we could add the desk there. Angel, was it you and Angel, or you started going through the pieces?
I was walking around with it too, for sure.
You were walking around with it, and.
And and essentially I have a project too, oh.
And I think Angel's never got used.
Yeah.
So it looks terrific. Sorry, we don't have a picture of it, but it looks great in the tech services area. It looks like everybody's thinking, what are we able to do that?
Oh, yeah.
Good, that's.
It looks great, so it's nice to repurpose something. So Angel and Mario and Kevin did that for us, that's great, we appreciate it. And spending, signal alarm had to postpone your door hinge that had to be replaced, is in our order. Apparently, door hinge has to do with whether the alarm goes on, and you can click it on or off, so that's on order. And we're still waiting for work proceeded in Public Maintenance Department on basically work around building sidewalks and stuff. We have financial reports, the operating budget, and if you know, we our salary budget lines are under spent because of all the open positions we have, the large materials and other expenses are on target this whole year. Stated, you can see the ten, canopy six eighty-five, overdrive forty-eight eighty-three thirty-nine, flat motion picture, which licensed show movies seventeen thirty, and ASCAP A S C N P, license to play music, two hundred and seventy dollars. And stated is on track to this fiscal first plan spending. I've always, I, I, on occasion, expressed the question in the past about why we have a fee for ASCAP and not for another company called B M I that does the same thing, and ordinarily, places that have a license with one would have a license with another, where there's the public performance of music, so.
We do both.
You have B M I also? Okay.
Some of them are location specific, and some of them, I think, I can't remember, one of them blankets the town, so we split with Park.
I see, okay, good, okay, thank you. Yeah, one we share with Parks and. Okay. Trust, previously mentioned PDF, a two thirty-five for Jenna, for staff, that was when we had men instead of the back part. I think, right, Jen. One fifty-three sixty-nine for new pop machines, the Southman alone. Hundred forty-three ninety-two for children's world language books, multicultural books and videos. Anthony Hat, funding at forty-four thirty-two for video games, supplies printed, twenty-two twenty-two for large print books from Centerpoint. Fifty dollars fifty-eight cents for world language books from Baker and Taylor, and sixty, sorry, sixty-one seventy-five for English language learning books from Baker and Taylor as well. From the Nutter Con, thirty-nine sixty-eight for English language learning books from Baker and Taylor. And the Y Fund, a hundred forty-four, ten dollars, a hundred forty-four dollars and cents for English learning books from Baker and Taylor. And as Jenna previously mentioned, town pressure conditions currently open, and has been delayed in getting these sent, so library partners can do an allocation early down to year twenty-four. Okay. Statistical report, there was an increase in study room use during the holidays season, but it was during the holiday season, which we've seen that before. There's an overall increase in computer usage, and it goes, we can get a lot of people visiting families coming to print their boarding passes, you know, the travel documents, and we see that a lot during during December. Along same lines, we saw adult reference questions with a slight uptick. And overall, everything's going pretty, pretty settling for me, yeah.
Yes, so I was just looking at the statistical report, and there's just one hot, big change from in under downloadable magazines and comics, up from six sixty to seventeen hundred, so.
So we're.
There must be some.
We're looking at that to see if we we made a mistake somewhere along the way. It was, it is a little off, there was a period of time when Robin Flynn had left, and we weren't, so we started collecting stats again from downloadables, but we think we may miss something, so we're.
Oh, maybe possibly last year that you may.
Yeah, we think something last year impacted, so we're not sure, but we are working on it. We definitely have.
Curious that there would be that many more magazines.
Well, there wasn't change actually when they switched from overdrive to living. They made a lot more magazines available. So it is possible. We, I mean, and that is, that is quite an uptick in other libraries, too, there's a lot more available than there was before. So, so that's possible. More than possible, but you know, might be a little too much, we'll see.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Okay, under, new business? New business? Yes, the missing word. I'll mention, yes, I'll mention the trivia. Being that the Needham Educational Foundation is going to have on Thursday, March fourteenth. Three staff members, myself, Tamar, and Allison are happy to be on the team. I know her heart expressed an interest in having one there.
Great, I did.
Case.
Well, I, let me just say that I did it last year, and I'd be willing to do it this year, but you know, other, if other trustees.
Is there a limited number of people? How many people? Six people on it. I've I've kind of recruited another staff member who's fairly new, so I've referred him to be our fourth. So it'd actually be ideal if.
I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I didn't want to, you know, block out anybody else.
I teach on Thursday evenings, so I can.
Yeah, okay. Any interest in, how are you at trivia?
Um, so I don't know, I'll have to look at my calendar, I'll let you know, but it certainly could be fun, it sounds like it is.
Okay, so Megan, Megan and Kay can figure out.
Okay. So we.
Okay. For her, you're committed.
Yeah, I'm down, definitely.
Down for it.
Now, the second part of that is painful. I know, I, I know the trustee paper last year, I'm not going to see the paper every year, I don't know if you need to ask. Yeah. Anna?
Last year, I think it was a combination of trustees and the friends.
Okay.
And previous to that, it's been the friends that have been generously, that's how I remember and the past.
Okay. And it also sounds like the sort of thing that, you know, hasn't been uncommon for the Friends and the Foundation to contribute, you know, equally on some stuff.
Yeah, so it's been, I mean, both over the years, sometimes trustees covered everything, sometimes half, or sometimes friends.
What's the total cost, or who's going to have? Remember, Jennifer?
I want to say it's like she said, maybe five or three hundred.
Yeah. Two hundred and seventy-five?
Yeah, yeah.
Two seventy-five to three hundred.
For the six people.
Yeah. Okay, well, well, we can figure that out.
Isn't going to be asked to pay for it, so I mean, so I don't know if there's a possibility that Friends would cover it this year.
It has to ask, I think you should ask the Friends and the Foundation, is there a reason not to ask the Foundation?
Could it be, could the permanent, permanent fund, what do we call it, the permanent?
It was one seventy-five. It was one seventy-five, okay.
Just made it easier to sell. Anna, what was that good one?
Could you get money from the permanent trust fund, or no? No?
No.
Okay.
I figured I asked you here.
Yeah.
So I'll ask Friends and the elephant. I'll put Airheart down for that, and I'll do Kay or Megan. Right, okay, perfect. And also on new business, we're pleased to have Katie.
And also on new business, we're, we're pleased to have Katie King here with us to give us all an update on the library director's.
Yeah, happy to be here, we're chugging along. And so, we had round one interviews uh, late last week, so thank you to Michael and to Rob for participating that. In terms of the candidate pool, we had about a similar size as our last cycle, so we had twenty applicants. Um, but I would say, um, in terms of the depth of experience, we had many more um, candidates who have. Uh, current and prior director level experience, and assistant director level experience. Um, and more applicants from Massachusetts, I think I noted the last cycle, we had a lot of out of state candidates. Um, we certainly have a few in this pool, but just um, proportionately not as many. Um, so we had, we invited seven candidates to round one, one withdrew um, before the um, scheduled time, so we interviewed six folks. We are advancing four candidates to round two, um, so that uh, those interviews will be this Thursday. And then we have round three scheduled um, for the week following, um, so I think we're, like I said, chugging along. Um, in good shape and, uh. Yeah, that's, that's my update on the director search, and I have a budget update as well, if that's helpful.
Please.
Um, but any questions on that?
I am sharing a note of your voice.
Yes. I always get optimistic hiring, so, uh, but I think, um, it's a, a great uh, group of four heading into round two.
What, um, what is your general, uh, what was general response to wanting to come to meet them for a director's role when they are already directors?
Um, a lot of, um, new, looking for the next challenge, just a new opportunity, um, and kind of another advancement.
Maybe more lateral, is it, what is, is it size, or is it?
It really varied by candidate, um, so some are comparable community, some are different sized community, so, um.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so my own question is, does, um, anybody sort of check, uh, look into the background people, you know, to. Google them, or even just do a, you know, a, how is that handled?
Yeah.
See whether there's been, you know, any issues that arise that we need to know.
Yeah, um, staff, we always Google, um, applicants for all positions that we hire. Um, and we have reference checks kind of at the later stage, um, those are the main, the main checks.
You do Cory as well, it's the same, the three kids in the building.
Um, so all of our job offers are pending successful background checks based on whatever's required for that particular position. Um, so that really is only done on the final candidate, um, they accept the offer, and then we would run a check. Um, yeah, for those positions.
Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, and so for the budget, for FY twenty-five, next fiscal year, I'm just running to update that, um. The town manager released her recommended operating budget. Um, in, in that she did not include the funding for the part-time um, reference librarian, the young, young adult specialist. Um, that exclusion has nothing to do with, um. Her or the support's opinion about the need or the merit of the request, it really, um, it's solely that there's more requests than there are resources. Um, the operating budget that goes to town meeting is the finance committee's operating budget, so the town manager's. Um, releases hers as, um, a proposal for a balanced budget, but the finance committee. Um, they continue to have their weekly meetings with each department, um, the library were up early on. Um, in their process, so they're getting kind of to the tail end of reviewing all of the budget requests, and they'll be formulating. Um, their recommended operating budget, um. For the end of this month, and that is ultimately what goes to town meeting. Um.
They take the town manager's budget and review that and then recommend, is that, is that a profit linear process there, or?
Yeah, it's, um, a little bit in parallel, so they've been meeting with each department. Um, and, um, boards and committees who have budgets, um, and reviewing them kind of individually on their own in their Wednesday night meetings. Uh, but they will also review the town manager's recommendation to see kind of where she landed, um, just as another, uh. More context for them in their decision making.
So would it ever happen that the town manager would not recommend a position and the finance committee would recommend it, and that would be what goes to the town meeting? See what I'm saying?
Yeah, that has happened, and the reverse also happened.
More often.
Yep, so, um, and then the capital budget, just to reaffirm where we had left off, which is still where we are, which is. Funding for the design for the young adult renovation is on, uh, the draft warrant for town meeting to be funded. Um, and money for library technology, which was the other capital submission. Um, so those combined are, um, half a million dollars, so those are, um, included on.
Very happy about that, that's.
Yeah.
Quick board's decision what goes on the warrant, warrant, very helpful.
And, and in our view, that's really the beginning of, of what's going to be a multi-part effort.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, that's great to get that started.
Yeah.
So.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
I, I've made the mistake about this in the past, but I think you're welcome to go, if you want to go.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Katie, get to the job. Have they decided the library vote tomorrow?
We have not decided yet, the, before pass got downgraded.
Oh, it did? I just.
Give it a little bit more time.
I just got a note from. Anyway, uh, Needham Police, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
We canceled school, they just emailed.
Oh. All right. Cancel school?
Yeah, yeah. School tomorrow.
Wow, that's a first.
Shut, so the library needs to shut up, and where are the kids gonna go?
Yeah, we can charge admission tomorrow.
Big one, parents dropping their kids off here.
That's right.
Okay, um. Old business. Uh. Strategic plan review, uh, Rob's not here, so Air Hard's gonna carry the ball.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm really just representing the work that, that Rob did, he was, he was really, um, in charge of moving this forward, and we have to thank him. Uh, for both providing a, a draft of what it looked like to, to compile. One of these reviews of a goal and bullet points, um. And so, that was one thing that was requested, um, by the trustees, uh, at the last meeting. Um, and this was using just kind of a, a quick, um, midterm summary that Dimitri had put together for us, uh, two weeks ago. Um, and so this is how it kind of would filter down into, uh, priority action items, and these are the things that. You know, we had specified, we were working on in fiscal year twenty-four from the strategic plan. And then progress and status is what we are learning, um, from Dimitri, um. Uh, in our review of, of those, uh, particular action items and the overall objective. Uh, so what is the status of those things, what have we actually done, um, as a library? And then next steps, um, which is where we put in kind of, um, the things that we expect to continue to be doing. Um, things that we know are in the pipeline on this, um, as well as any comments that we have with regard to direction on the next year. So that'll be kind of a starting point for saying what are our priority action items for, uh, the following years, in, in this case fiscal year twenty-five. Um, and so, uh, those are the kind of three sections in what they fall into, any questions about that as a template?
Um, I guess my one question is, as, as I, I emailed her, uh, earlier, just who does what? So, um, progress status report, right? Um, is written by the director?
No.
No.
No, so, um, so the way that this, uh, this goes, um, is essentially, um. The, we ask for that progress and status from Dimitri, and so he compiles the things that are relevant, relevant to this. Um, and then we, um, uh, put those in, I mean, it could purely be copy and paste, if it's, if it's all there, we might, you know, have follow up questions.
Some editorial discretion by the trustees, working from what's.
Yeah, we need, uh, greater detail, if there's something, uh, that we want to make sure that we, we cover there. Um, and so that's, that's kind of a conversation, uh, with Dimitri, and similarly, the next steps is kind of a conver- conversation with, uh, with Dimitri. Dimitri to understand, okay, you know, what do we expect is going to continue, uh, happening in this space? Um, you know, ask questions about where you, what, you know, look at the other priority actions that might be on that list for that objective and see if other ones. Could be brought into focus, uh, for that, uh, for that next year, some of this is hard to think, we don't have a new director as to how we're going to set out those priorities. Um, but this is where you could, as, you could have a comment as a, as a, as a trustee member. Um.
In the next steps.
And say, you know, this is in the next steps, and I think that this is really important, we need, we need to focus on this, um, greater in the next year. Um, and, and just a, just a reminder, that, that'll be a separate process, right? This report does not then, in the next step section, become the priority action items. Um, that'll be a separate process that we, that we run, um, where we actually choose those priority.
These are sort of our, our thoughts.
Yeah, and that'll be the input to that decision-making process, uh, that we probably take on with whoever is the director, uh, at that point.
Can we label the next steps, I'm sorry?
May I suggest that there is, um, kind of like a standing operating SOP, kind of like, um. Outbullited of what you just described, these are the steps you're going to follow.
Oh, yeah.
So that you don't have it very clear, and you don't have to be looking at the minutes, or, or something else, like a one pager.
That's a good idea, yeah, Kay, Kay's been, uh, similarly trying to, uh, looking to draft something like that, um, in terms of how we were writing the report, but I think. Carrying on beyond the report would be also be smart.
Yeah.
That's similar to the email you sent.
Yes, that, that was kind of what I was asking for, is exactly what Anna just said. Um, and I, I wrote up an example, but you know, you and Rob who are working on the process would know better than, you know, I just wanted to kind of. Get it in place, who does what and in what order.
I agree, I think that's a smart idea, I haven't had a chance to touch base with Rob about this. Um, uh, but I think it makes sense for us to articulate that and actually have it written.
Particularly because it's a new way of, of evaluating strategic plan, you're going to have a new trustee. And, you know, also, I think this, until it becomes a habit.
It, 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 it strikes me as, as, as that we've learned lessons from prior, from how things have worked in the past, and. This, this seems like a very thoughtful, hopefully efficient system, uh, for, for moving forward. Uh, in a way that's, you know, fair and, and does what it's supposed to do, so that's, that's great, thank you to Rob, Kate, of course.
Well, I just was wondering, Dimitri, do you, do you want to weigh in or comment on the process, um?
I, the only, when I have discussions with, um, Rob and her, you know, my, my concern. Was that, and this is just what I'm feeling, because I've been here years now, the last time, it very much. Impacted the staff feeling like they were being evaluated themselves, right, way that it's being done, so. While this is, again, is, is her heart point out, once we have a new director, things will get a little bit more shape shifted, so to speak. But the idea being that the administration be like the central point to collect this data and work towards these, I mean, the whole library team works towards these goals, but. They're not the one being evaluated, right?
Right, yeah.
Administration, so that, that is, that was one of my main concerns going forward, that, you know, that, that, that's how, as what her described it.
Well, hopefully, we've addressed that, and it seemed to me that, that they're going to be working with you to provide the information. So that they're, they're part of.
Absolutely.
The process.
Sure.
So is this going to be looked at as kind of like an overview, or just some kind of definitive document?
I don't know if I can find definitive document, because this is, 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 is a couple meetings ago, I went through, like. We're already doing a lot of things and working towards objectives involved, so. Uh, would we like to achieve everything that's on there? Sure, we're, that's, that's the goal, that's, that's objective, but.
I don't know that, that we, I don't know that we end up with a formal document so much as an ongoing process. By which we're measuring, I suppose at the end of a certain period of time, when we've evaluated all the objectives. Uh, some, some, some of the materials can be combined and, and, and what you have as a report of some sort.
Anna has a question, but one last thing, what it says, and obviously, this whole process will be force correct, right? You know, it doesn't mean that we're doing it perfectly, we might be doing something inside all of a sudden, oh, you know what, maybe we should change course here and do it this way. That's fine too, because all, the main thing is to achieve the goals and the objectives, so if we have the force correct, that's going to be fine, you know, so, Anna, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, part, that was part of my comment, that evaluation is not about the people, is the goal.
Right, right.
So we need to make that clear to the staff, it was always about the goal and the, in the previous strategic plan.
Sure, sure, that's.
So, so is, is the process is the goal, is the objectives, however, and of course, and there's no doubt that they're doing more than. Right, and so the evaluation, uh, to your point is, if over the course of time, you see that. The goal is, was achieved very quickly, or, or is overwhelmingly large, you know, uh, scope, whatever, then you adjust, and that's it.
Absolutely, and, and I feel what Rob and her are sort of helped craft here, and I have a little part in it, but you know. This conveys it, I think, perfectly to staff, I mean, they don't see it any other way, like what you just described, so. I, those are my feelings on.
Great, thank you.
Well, and, and, you know, I can only say, I hope that the staff feels like we're all on the same team. You know, with, with all of this, that's probably the way I feel, and I think the way all of the trustees feel.
I think, uh, I want to just add that, you know, our bylaws, uh, really emphasize the fact that we're meant to kind of review. Uh, how well the library is performing against the strategic plan, uh, but that doesn't require us to actually file a formal report with anyone. Right, uh, so this is just a mechanism by which we do that review work. Um, and, uh, and I like the fact that this year, we're, we're, we've changed it in two different ways. Um, that make it feel less like a, a review of individual staff, where it's focused on goals and objectives. And we're, and we're collating information through the administration, through, uh, Dimitri, to focus on that, uh, on, on those goals and, uh, and objectives.
And with an eye towards next steps to continue our efforts to accomplish.
Yeah.
So. That's great, well, thank you, Air Hard, to you and Rob, especially for, for your efforts, Kay.
Just, just, I was wondering when, um, we might have the process, I know you.
Yeah, so the other thing I wanted to cover was, um, you know, we had asked folks to, to see, to, um. Uh, to put in their requests, their favorite goals, um, uh, that they wanted to be in charge of. Um, and so Rob put together a, a draft, a suggestion of, of kind of three teams, remember, we were thinking these as teams. Uh, you know, ru- roughly one trustee per goal, but working in teams of two, um, so that they can, uh, collaborate. And so Jay and Megan could do calls one and two, um, and Rob, uh, could do three and four, and then, um, Michael and myself could do, uh, five and six. Um, and that's, would also be in the order of presentation, um, so if that works for everyone, um, as a list, and it.
Megan, you were first, it was like, I know you're around.
I give you some work.
Yes, we are first, Jay.
But I said, we're, I said, we are first.
Oh, okay.
That's what I said.
So we would target the months of, um, April, May and June.
April, May and June for reports, um, we also talked about the fact that, you know, if there's a desire to before town meeting. Um, have like an early report out from, um, the folks that are meant to present in May and June, if those are falling after the town meeting. Um, we could, we could arrange to do that as well.
I think that's a great idea, because, uh, we can be prepared for, just, you know, to, to have some evidence of what we're going to do.
So then, like, that is to say, team B and C, you know, we might ask for a preview, a little early, uh, before your time to present, uh, in more detail in May and June.
Yeah, and just since, since we're going to have a separate a, agenda item on about town meeting, but we do probably need to. Since we have a library related item on, to be voted on town meeting, we probably need to organize ourselves to. Make a presentation at town meeting in support of that, um, so.
In support of.
The, the space plan, uh, budget, and what's, what's the other?
And library technology.
And, yeah, so.
With an eye towards that, is it, is it possible to share with, with town meeting members, the, the letter that we submitted? Uh, to the town and FinCon and the select board in support of, 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 of this. Motion, it would be, you know, it makes, it makes our case.
There is a mechanism, I understand.
You can submit information ahead of time, you have to, uh, coordinate with Teddy. And they used to be, for every article, you have some, they used to videos, but I don't think they do videos anymore, now they just some, uh, supporting information.
I think it might make sense to put in the record somehow, that letter.
Yeah. Then make the plan during, when the article comes up for discussion, for someone to represent the trustees and. Say, you know, summarize the letter.
Somebody has to stand up.
Yeah.
That'd be great, yeah, let's.
And then, and then maybe plan some other folks, the.
Yeah.
Allies and whatnot.
So the letter address is specifically the teen space, right?
You all addresses, describes the whole.
Okay.
The board for the faith plan, and with this the beginning of a multi-part, uh, process, but it.
Yeah.
It's for what's on the, on the, the warrant, yeah.
And, and usually the, uh, FinCon also, and the select board member that sponsored the, the, the article. Will have a summary of this article and the description, the impact, the, the amount. Um, so there is, all of that is already, so what the, what the trustees may add is more context, more nuance, and. Um, so there is all of that is already so what the what the trustees may add is more context, more nuance and more like. The long-term implication of the investment or something.
Well, and I think again, that's all in the letter.
Could we reserve some time in our meetings in March and April to prepare for that?
I think that's.
I think that's a good idea. Uh, when is the town meeting?
May.
May second, I believe.
Very personal, yeah.
What? Is the I think the March, we should we should put that up on our agenda. It's March. I think we're up for the honestly, our next meeting. A a plan for how to uh look ahead towards town meeting.
It would be it'd be good for us to be able to identify who the folks are that are gonna stand up in March and then.
Yes.
Um, and then have a conversation with them in April, refining whatever their.
So uh, make a note of that to to have on on the agenda for our our next meeting. Yeah, that's great.
Kay, do you wanna talk about uh your idea of kind of like uh standardizing some of the responsibilities of the trust reporting, trustee reporting?
Oh, um, is that on here as an agenda?
No, but I think I'm I'm just folding it into the strategic plan review update.
Oh, um.
Cause I think, cause I think this is an important point that, you know, um, bringing this up and then and then we could uh finalize it and send it out.
Um, so. I'm not quite sure what what we're referring to here.
So I'll I'll introduce it. So so it's okay sent to uh 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 to um. Rob, uh Jay and myself, some ideas about like um the strategic plan review and kind of having a written out process. Trustee is what I'm.
Not the trust, we're not talking about.
Not the trust.
We're talking about this process that I, yeah, I just really, um, well, you you go ahead.
No, I think and I think it's a good idea to have it very clear as to kind of like what the expectations are of the folks that are doing this review. I mean, I love the idea of adding in the the notes about, okay, this is, you know, the plan to present and then after we finish the presentations. This is how we're going to then move on to, you know, uh, in a in a separate process, looking at uh selecting priorities for the for the coming uh fiscal year.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to all of us as Anna said too, um, that you just have it sort of spelled out step by step, who does what and and in what order, you know?
Well, this this looks very good what you what you have here, Kay. We can all give it some more thought.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Figure out if it needs to be refined and perhaps approved that, you know, that review it at our next meeting.
Want to um take a look, because it doesn't totally match up with what you're describing, so I.
Yeah, I I I'm happy to take a next path at it, uh, based on based on your early draft. I really appreciate you um kicking that off.
Thank you, yeah. Anything else to talk about?
The town meeting is May sixth.
For town meeting?
Uh, that's the, there's two dates. Um, I think next one probably is the eighth.
Say that again?
There there's the sixth and then it's the eighth probably. I don't see.
Usually it's a Monday.
Yeah, Monday and Wednesday. Yeah, and usually the special town meeting is where the capital items are discussed.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Next on 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 our agenda is the equity inclusion update and the. As opposed to Anna, this is you and 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 you're 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 the voice that will be hard to replace when you leave us. Uh, and after our next um meeting, so uh you've you've been such a powerful and and you know, voice. Uh, on on these and you've been great for the trustees in terms of dealing with all this. We'll have to figure out how to, uh, you know, a a a plan for how to. Keep our attention focused on it.
Uh, yes, well, you've noticed that lately I've been kind of delegating, you know, Dimitri's been doing a great job adding some to the report. So I think things have, you know, beat transcended beyond just one person. Um, and for this one, um, actually the friends took the lead and they had that wonderful event with Dr. Mary.
That was great. I was there, yeah.
Which is actually has been recorded, so hopefully we will um have it available. I'll I'll look it up and share it. So, um, it was well attended.
It was fascinating. Yeah, thanks to friends.
Yeah, this could as uh, and they just uh somebody was, you know, traveling everywhere and all the. Big uh high universities, USA MIT the the week after. Um, so yeah, we were very lucky to have him.
Can we quickly go through?
Please, yes.
Um, so on. For displays, children's are created by a different page on the children's website, featuring a video like all someone has been. Full field performance which was today is after we're not, I mean, I'll make the word then. Announcement, right? Um, and several black history links, uh, the staff created Black History Month display, the children's staff. Uh, children's have author grade display featuring the recent How They Got Winning illustrated along with books from Freda Scott, Freda Scott King Award. All African-American authors and illustrators. And as far as resources, um, for Dalton Girls, there were four, five graphic novels, thirty-five young adult fiction books, four large print. Seventy-three adult fiction and fifty-four nonfiction and children's materials acquired sixty-eight. In terms of staff progress, uh, children's staff met with Kathy Wong, the outreach director, new awareness on mental health. Through the need in community council to discuss the possibility of doing one book. Book club provides four to six with books on being safer in their online lives. The kids will read a book which we ordered, I think. Called Rethink the Internet: How to Make the Digital World Less.
I think we should all read that book.
Yeah. Um, the book club will meet for three months, uh, one time every other week. Discuss new chapter, a new chapter each meeting, their meeting against who established timing and put the details. Uh, and reference staff member watched the webinar, A Trauma-Informed Approach to Dealing with Difficult People. From uh Nation Academy, which is something to surprise you. And I just, we talked about materials, I also included in their materials that she from Tamar. Tell us how many materials were added. Yeah. It's it's been a nice series in the name of time.
Yeah, thank you for putting that together. That's a nice new um. Really?
Report, department report, and then. Um, you know, it'd be nice to share that.
There was a a a large number of of new books, both fiction and nonfiction. Do they all, they don't all go to the new releases section out of? How did that work? They go they go mostly directly.
Mostly, yeah.
And.
Yeah. They don't even get out on the shelf, they just go right. People get an email alert that their hold is ready for that.
Ah, yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
I do that all the time, Jay.
Out in advance, they request new books before they even.
Well, one of the really awesome things that you might remember from a couple months ago is that tomorrow I got um. Baker and Taylor have a special link up so that when you go into our catalog and if you're looking for the next. Release from your favorite author, now you can see that one purchase from Nita and it's going through processing. So when our patrons see that, they can immediately place a hold on it.
Okay.
And so if you have, if there's a book that's coming out that you're looking forward to, um, and you know it's coming out in the next two months. You can go and look it up now before its publication date and you can put your name on the list for it. Yeah, and it's really exciting to see like some of like the um Kristen Hannah had a new book come out, The Women, and I think um. Put my name on it and I was like number four hundred.
Yeah, yeah. It's any shot, if it's any consolation, John, she was written up in the globe, so I think she's got the highest um.
Well, she's that.
Pretty run.
She was also a book of the month.
Yeah.
No.
So I went that way.
When I was in college, I worked in the acquisitions department in my college library. Um, and I would open up the uh the audiobooks and if there's one there that just came out that I wanted, I'd just check it out myself before I even went in the search.
There's an idea for you, John.
Okay, is that is that particular aspect, is that uh system wide or is it just? Specifically here?
It is a module that specific libraries have to opt into.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I know when people want something, the library will automatically, if it's not here, they'll default. And I was just wondering. If there were certain materials that were not necessarily available throughout the entire network. Versus just for a specific library.
You know, I would say that Dimitri, you might give those these a little bit more specifically to this, but there are some librarians that. Um, you know, there 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 is a little bit of an art to it, like they're they're spending a lot of time reading lists and looking at um. Bestsellers and recommended things. Baker and Taylor is really good about providing lists about. Like here's new releases coming out that you might be interested in. Um, there's a little bit of a science to it where we are looking at the number of folds that exist and the number of copies that we have. And how do we shift that ratio with our resources? Um. But then when it comes to less popular titles, I think it really depends on the librarian's interest, the knowledge.
It is in a more general sense. All librarians love pop culture, right? So whatever, I know I'll watch the Givin Burger, I like to watch Bill Maher, you know, and he's got an offer on like, do we have that book? And I have, I'm driving my wife, no, why aren't you? I go, I wanna see if we have that book. We have it. There was one book that came across actually that only one library in Minuteman had, but why why don't we have, you know? Um, so and that's just, that's just me, right? But if you look at how many librarians work in that one area, right? We all do that, whether it's movie, film, the TV show, or you read an article. And you think, do we have that book, right? And that's it's kind of like a little competition of all of us, like, do we have that book? And when we have that book, oh, I'm from Wosley, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, but you'd be surprised. And Amelia is right there. She often sends us recommendations for um health and. Um, wellness, you know, books that, you know, how often when I see your struggles, like, why don't we have that? And sometimes it's our, you know, so in a more general sense, like Jenna said, there is a little bit of. I don't know if it's so much of an art, but it's, we all have a vested interest, right? So it's not, sure, we use Baker and Taylor, we use all the tools. Then all of us plug in a little bit too by just saying, can we buy this or can we buy that book and 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 do it too, you know?
Oh, yeah, I do too. Um, and then it was so. When it comes to the number of books in the system, like, one of the things that we wanna do is make sure that our books go out. And so if there's something where we don't see a lot of movement, we might not be investing as much of our resources, which are limited. To purchasing things that we're not sure are gonna go out if there are other libraries in the area that have it. That's one of the big benefits to being part of the network. Is that, you know, maybe in Wosley, there's some people that just really love those Halloween. Uh, like a specific type of murder mystery or something like that. Um, and we might not see those moving as much, but have access to their collection and that's wonderful. But we see a lot of, there's a lot of metrics that we track.
And and it goes like, like Jenna said, you know, I might see a book where Fork Line has it. But I also see they have like eighty holes, so that tells me we should get that, right? I'm not talking about like one book that the library has and like it's not moving and it's, you know, what I'm curious about is. If it's got quite a few holes, that means we should get it, you know, and and I'm sure other libraries, other colleagues, counterparts do that for men, like they'll. Check it too. You'll see it on the list service sometimes like, hey, does your library, how come we all miss that, you know, so.
You're talking mostly about new books, right, as opposed to?
I am talking about books. Sometimes there's something that's in the news or something, there is a book that got published a few years back that all of a sudden is back in. In discussion in the news or interview or somewhere over the morning, Sunday show, you know, political shows, so.
Yeah, we had, um, there was a a book that came out this last year called The Rachel Infinite by a British author. Who's published um a number of books primarily in the UK. Um, and we got a request from a patron for one of her older books. That's not available to purchase in America. We haven't yet the British app even meet that request. Um, which we're happy to do, but it does, you know, sometimes an author becomes popular and then in the back catalog.
Thank you.
Good explanation, thanks.
Thanks.
We can keep talking about books.
Uh, why don't we shift though to the library art and exhibit committee? Still talking about art.
We are moving on to the art, visual arts. Uh, so um we have currently the Devin Gichiara, the abstract artist. Most of you have probably seen um very vivid um. Uh, abstract and highly textural abstract work, which is nice to have, you know, that kind of variety and. Then next month is Bob Edgerton, which is um. Uh, this is definitely uh Gay Allen's influence and her her uh ongoing interest in um science fiction. And fantasy artists, um, which is great because, you know, it kind of gets uh the interest of young people. Uh, into the, so we have Bob Edgerton, who's a very accomplished and prominent um. Uh, illustrator of sci-fi and fantasy coming next month, um, maybe before the end of this month, Kay, tells. Tells us, um, I'm trying to, now that I'm back from my travels, I'm gonna try to set up our next meeting for the Arts and Exhibition Committee. Um, by the end of this month and hopefully we will uh address kind of the second half of twenty twenty-four then, so. That's that's the report.
Thank you. Um, Rob usually delivers the MacIver series report, we'll expect him to. Fill us in uh at our next meeting. Uh, for the friends, uh, I I can say uh that some of some of you might have been there at that recent. Uh, talk by Dr. Paris Jeffries about the Embrace Boston and the Martin King statue, statue is very interesting. They had a very successful book sale, uh, good crowd, uh, and they were, they were happy with the result of that. And I think that's the that's the main news to report from the friends. Uh. Nobody, Beth not here from the Library Foundation, Kay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so as the the Library Foundation lays on this year, I've been in touch with Beth who um. And both her her twin children are birthday today, so. Um, yes, and uh, but she did give me some uh, you know, brief reports, so I'll just share with you what she um had to say, so. Um, their most recent numbers, um, from December, they brought in thirteen thousand from the annual appeal, which is great. Um, the total endowment is one point eight million for the Library Foundation, which is a life. Figure. Um, she says currently they don't have any um grants, uh, grant uh requests pending from um the library right now. And I'm gonna assume that's because of the transitional.
Right.
Nature right now, they are not evaluating any um um library grant requests. Um, but I'm sure we'll have some.
And I I suppose even with the transition, that 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 couldn't stop the library from getting some thought for the sorts of. Uh, grants you might be looking for from the foundation.
Yeah.
Ongoing program.
They have a series of upcoming uh of events um that um. I guess this is the first year they've been doing this, is my my understanding, LFN doing a a lecture series. Um, so this month, for example, they have um on the twenty-fifth. At two, the Modernistics Trio, Gershman Celebration, George, celebrating George and Ira Gershman. I guess it's a music performance.
Where is that?
That's the uh twenty-fifth of this month. Um, so that's interesting.
Where will that be taking place?
You know.
Actually, one of my programs that they found.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So are all these programs? Yeah, and off, okay, so that's not an office series, but that's, okay, they're funding that music um. Performance and then they have other, the other authors are um two twenty-seven, Rachel. Uh, Silver Devlin, Snapshots of My Father, John Silver, coming to speak, um, and um. Authors, also Sa- Sanjeev Chopra and Gina Vild. Uh, speaking on the two most important days, how to find your purpose and live a healthier, happier life. Do you know anything about that one?
Yeah, um, it is uh somebody that um Matt Robinson, who is on the board.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, interviewed for his uh cable show, um, putting back their co-sponsoring and along with the foundation. Um, so he, I gather they were very interesting speakers.
So, yeah, so the elephant now has Matt Robinson, who is a kind of mover and shaker and has a cable TV show, and so that, I think that's, you know, he's. Um, playing a significant role in this lecture series, right? And that, she didn't list one more, that's.
That is coming up in April, and it is Jordan Rich, who was for decades on WBC radio. And he'll be talking about his fifty years of on radio.
Okay.
That I believe is the uh last Tuesday of uh. April.
All right, that one she hasn't listed yet, maybe because they haven't totally um finalized it, I don't know.
It's finalized, it's just, yeah, I don't think they went that far ahead.
Okay. And um. She's also saying, they're very exciting, programs for yoga, China's martial martial arts, Bright Stars Theater. Uh, and she's, they're listing a bunch of um.
That's a children's stuff.
Children's things that I guess the elephant is funding, I would think, um, and um. Our goals are also better to better advertise and promote our programs, especially the adult ones, I guess, you know. Our goals are also better to better advertise and promote our programs, especially the adult ones, I guess, you know, as we all do, we're trying to, you know, fill the house. So it's people, we have these various programs, um and they are continuing to ask for feedback forms. Our hope is this year to have one of our members attend each event to help promote and introduce and get feedback forms from for the elephant, so that's what they're up to. See, Beth is gonna step down as president, she says, at the end of this year, but um and um. They're looking for new members, so if anybody knows, anybody who thinks they would be interested in playing a role in the elephant.
Same same thing with the friends.
Yeah.
Friends are always looking, if you know people to be getting involved, um. Very good, uh before we adjourn, opportunities that any trustees have any other comments or questions, Megan, just make sure you. You know, you're you're we're not ignoring you while while you're remote. Uh uh anybody here have any other thing, anything to talk about before we?
Oh, I just thought we maybe would mention the that there is an election coming up, and that we have people running and uh. Um Jay, I think you.
I'll give it another shot. So I have to get my my, if you're if you live in Needham and you're in this room and you haven't signed my my list yet, the.
Do you have it?
I do, before you leave, I have to get some, get some people to sign by the end of the week.
Do they have an arm behind your back?
So uh I did see that that someone else had taken out papers, so there 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 is another candidate that would fill the other open spot so far.
So that's all we know, is only one, um I haven't gone in to ask at town hall, but there's only one other person.
The last I saw in what was ever sent out by either the observer or the NITM, about the current people who presented.
Right, so we have potentially two candidates, but we don't know for sure. Um.
Yeah, I think it's by the end of, I think next Tuesday you have to get the signatures in by, so. Anyone having a party with like fifty people coming? Let me know, you know anyone in Needham having a party?
For the high school flooding house tomorrow.
What is tomorrow?
The high school flooding house.
Oh, that's right.
And um also, same election, we have another person running for town, Eric, right? Well, any anyone else?
How did you do it? So I think that's it, any uh motion, I suppose, to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second, Michael, uh I'll go around, uh Michael O'Neil.
Aye.
Air Hard Gray.
Aye.
Kay Cahill.
Hi.
Anna Geraldo Fur.
Hi.
Megan Small.
Aye.
No, Rob Pettit is not here, Daisy Alco, I say aye, and that's the meeting is adjourned. Have a have a great month and we'll know, uh we'll we'll follow up on all the stuff next, you know, next time.